Specialty of the City Council Tuesday, April 7th, 2020.
Oh, make sure the mics are on.
Okay, I'll put one on.
Well, at least when you're about to speak.
After the slides.
And off as you please, but.
Yeah.
I won't be able to hear you.
It's down to your.
No, I, I, um.
The bald spot.
Bald spot.
Mine. I watched the video last night, so I'm really sensitive today.
I have to tell you, we went to.
Welcome, everybody.
Bishop Garcia asked why we went to the stuff. Hey, Wayne.
Hey, what are you doing?
Hello, Wayne.
Hey.
Hi, Don. I can't see, I can't see. Is this like not enough installed? I was supposed to give them this because it's a phone number too, right? You have to dial in there and do that. Okay, I'm making a new one.
Looks like people are figuring it out.
Yeah, they're all there. Let me show you. They're in this.
Anyway.
Charlie's here.
Hi, Charlie.
Charlie.
Oh, you can't hear me.
Yeah, just wait.
Okay, good.
Hey, Charlie. Hi, guys. You guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I'm here, thank you. You've got a weird sound, but we can hear you.
You can face it more towards me, I can't see. Hey, Sisah.
Hi, Mary. Hi there.
I'm Leslie.
Leslie. How do I look? How do I look?
Hi, guys. I have to stop looking at that.
How you doing, Charlie?
Way wrong.
I'm going over this clock right here. Should I start going?
No, we have five minutes. Hi, forgot to, forgot to say hey to the audience.
No, well.
The actual audience.
Well, Wayne went outside again.
Who went outside again?
Oh, he puts that, that background. You can put a background on your screen if you like.
Yes.
Oh. Oh, that's nice. Thank you, John, for doing that. Couldn't see him the other day. I was blinded.
When you start getting in conversation with your family, you know, you can put your, you know, your backyard or whatever.
So I have a little summary of things.
Oh, okay, is that for me or do I have to come get it?
Yeah, it'll be on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Um, I didn't have the agenda on this time, so I'm gonna.
Can you hear me, John?
Yeah.
Before we leave tonight? Because I got a Zoom account and Rick and I want to visit my dad and my sisters and.
Okay.
Did you want any of this stuff? We can have a photo talk.
No, thank you.
So if you can help me send out the.
Yes.
Give me some tips.
Okay, I'm, I'll try it.
It's, yeah, it is super easy to do.
Well, that's what I thought. But I, I have, I have a whole contact list and everything and only three of them are the invitation.
Well, that part I'm not doing a lot of.
Did you text her?
That last time. No, no, I need, I need a little bit. It's not like it's.
Did they open? Oh, yeah, okay. And they can't find it.
They said they can't find it.
That's right.
Okay. My color printer went out. Mine is in black and white or in black. Do you have it down? This was blue in my, in my. Oh, I got it. Oh, maybe I did print. Uh-uh, because it says holes. Yeah, we have all kinds of stuff. That's the only one.
Okay, Mary, are you ready to go?
Sure.
Can everyone hear us?
Yes. I can hear you.
You ready?
So the, the city of San Juan Batista City Council, uh, meeting of April 7th, 2020 is now in session.
We have the pledge of allegiance and Vice Mayor, can you read it, please? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, made indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great one.
Roll call. Oh, we wait.
I just gotta make sure that all of our council members are. There it is. Okay, let's see. Harris, Wayne, Wendy, lady. It's Dan on yet?
Who? Um, maybe she can call everybody like where she did last. Yeah.
Right, I just gotta make sure the council microphones should be open. Okay. Gotta make sure. How do I get this? Okay. All right.
So Laura will ask you to call them.
So Laura, are you ready?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember DeVries?
Not here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Laura. So now we go on to public comment. These are comments only on what is on the agenda. Public comment.
So I'm ready to start, Mary. Should we just jump in?
And just go past public comment? Doesn't sound like there's anybody. Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Just wanted to give the City Council a quick update on things that are coming across our desk here. Um, it's complicated sorting through all the emails. I'm sure you've always experienced similar things. I've arranged this presentation much like I did a week ago, starting with, uh, with our, um, federal government, which really hasn't changed much, um, just that the, uh, no new actions that I'm aware of. Just clarification of previous asks and then, of course, wear a mask. So I want to make sure that we all have our masks on.
Do we? Okay.
Wait, no, we, no.
No, we can't.
We can't because.
I was gonna say, we can't. Talk about being renewed.
Sorry, we can't wear the mask because it messes up the microphone, so, okay. And it also messes up the microphone if you do not wear it. Turn it on, okay, it's on. That should be good. Am I good? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so, um, we know that businesses are locally applying for the SBA grants. Um, that there has been no relief received yet. I just got an update from the Economic Development Corporation about the Small Business Paycheck Protection Program. Um, there's a whole outline that they've sent out to me at 5:31 today. That's how fast things are changing. And it gives a nice outline when to apply, how to apply, talking about employees must be kept on the payroll or rehired quickly. Uh, the loan would be fully forgiven if used for payroll costs and other eligible costs. So I'm sure Wendy is on with us today and she can give us an update when we talk about the, um, the action item about, about the, uh, the local business participation program that we have later in our agenda. Um, in listening to the governor's summary today, uh, he, uh, summarized activities statewide as slowing, uh, but, but, uh, but that would reduce the curve, but it also prolongs it. So it's, uh, mixed news. But the, the good news is, is that it is apparently slowing. We need to stay after it. He keeps referring to, uh, cutting your parachute off before you hit the ground. So, so it is critical that we all, um, honor the shelter in place and, um, and, uh, that's the only way we're going to, to beat this thing. So that's our best resort. It remains our best choice of action. He talked about new wellness resources for families and teens. I know our building official is on his fifth week of staying at home and he's pulling his hair out. What's left of it? So, uh, so, uh, and he recommends that we all, of course, call friends and stay in touch with them. And now's a good time to reach out to that person you haven't talked to in a long time, just as you know they're doing. Um, the state assistance seems to be targeting citizens and businesses at the time, and it may adversely impact local government. That refers to a delayed payment of property taxes and, and delayed and deferred payment of sales taxes. We have the budget listed later as an item in our agenda, so I'll wait. Um, our treasurer's here today, Chuck Egger, and, and so is Wendy to, to help us with a budget summary of, of some of these state actions. Last Wednesday is when the governor talked about deferment of sales tax payments. Locally, we learned today, this afternoon, that we've risen from 23 cases last Friday up to 31 cases. So that's almost a 10% bump. We are testing more people than ever, uh, which is great. Um, we've reduced the, the threshold for testing, um, and we're getting faster results. So when you look at the county's, uh, website, you'll notice, uh, that, that we are testing more people than we have in the last two weeks, so I expect this week to be even higher, which of course is an explanation for why our numbers would go up if we're testing more people, we're amplifying more, more people carrying the virus. The, uh, the new, uh, shelter in place order came out last week as promised, um, Tuesday night. Um, I noticed that Sacramento just issued theirs today, so, uh, our region is, uh, on the cutting edge of this. And as a result, uh, we've had a few bumps in the road. We've had, uh, the, the Resource Management Director, uh, met with the health official and crafted some unique aspects to our shelter in place order. And, um, basically, uh, the biggest provision in there that's new and surprising, in addition to closing parks and closing public restrooms, that's an order now, um, is, is construction. And so the decision around construction was based on any, any contractor working on a project in our jurisdictions, um, that is not working on a project that is affordable housing. So if the entire project is more than 10% affordable housing, um, then they're allowed to continue construction. And interestingly enough, um, uh, both of our developments have 20% affordable housing in them. Uh, the Meritage Rancho Vista project is a 20% using ADUs, and so is the copper leaf project by Eden Bridge out on San Juan Hollister Road. Uh, to that end, uh, if you're going to continue construction, you must receive a, uh, an approved, uh, employee health and safety plan. And those plans were received by the RMA director on Saturday afternoon and sent immediately to the two developers and with the request to get that back to, directly to the RMA director as soon as possible. And they turned them around rather quickly. Eden Bridge had an approved, uh, safety plan for their employees, um, uh, by, by lunch on Monday, and we're expecting the same for Meritage. Um, interestingly enough, uh, Meritage, uh, is not on site, at least I haven't seen them there. I was out yesterday afternoon, yesterday morning, and they're not on site and they were offsite on Friday. You know, they have another project in Hollister, and so it's possible that the superintendent, when he was told that he had to cease work in Hollister, just ceased work altogether. So the only active construction going on right now is in the copper leaf development, and that's, uh, that's confined to a fenced, uh, secluded area. That, that, that development is split in two, and so half of it, of the units have been sold and that's open. And the other half is, is, uh, is at least enclosed with fencing. Um, but the whole idea of the safe employee, uh, uh, program is to make sure they're not eating lunch together, they're not congregating together, et cetera. So the same, uh, same message that we've been seeing, but now enforced through this policy. So, uh, with that, um, we are muddling through and, and implementing, um, on the, uh, the, uh, shelter in place order. Um, last Friday was our, uh, second briefing from the Board of Supervisors, uh, two members of the Hollister City Council and, and the mayor, and this time we had Sessar come and join. Uh, and then I did my best to type up some minutes to that, uh, so that the rest of the council would know what was being shared. Um, and, uh, most, most of the information I'm sharing tonight was also part of that conversation. I don't know if we want to talk about, uh, the rotation. We, we went to a rotating, uh, council member, and so if, if anyone wants to speak on that, I'll, I'll pause for a minute and, and let people speak or let the mayor talk and then people can speak.
Well, my thought was, um, maybe if, uh, John Freeman is interested in attending this next Friday, this coming Friday, you can attend that meeting if you'd like. Or, or Dan, I don't know which one of you would, uh, like to, uh, attend the meeting, so. I don't know, has Dan signed on yet or is he here?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Dan's here.
Oh. I was, I was on before, but I was muted, so I was saying, I'm here, I'm here, so.
Oh, okay, well, let, make sure the city clerk notes that.
Okay.
So anyway, so, um, I'd like to invite either one of you, whichever one would like to attend that meeting on Friday.
So I'll. I think John said it, said he wanted to, right, John?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So I'll, I, I'll forward you that information, John.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and the minutes are, I, I won't be as detailed, I don't think, in the future. I, I, I won't have the time, but, um, I'll try and get minutes out to you the same day when I can, so. Appreciate everyone's patience with that. And, um, the same message of signing up for an Excel. Um, one thing we noticed today, um, we tried to call 211 and it doesn't work from a landline.
Oh.
So, and some of our, some of our residents rely on landlines, and so that's important to know that, that's, uh, that we experimented, we tried to call from City Hall and we couldn't get through to 211, so.
So we need to let them know.
Yeah, so we need to let them know, and, and that's just something that we learned today as, as we were doing our, our rounds and our, uh, and our, and our program, which we'll get into some detail here about in just a second. So for the city of San Juan Batista, um, City Hall remains close to the public and the staffing time has pretty much been cut in half. Um, we have limited, uh, street sweeping. That's mostly because, uh, people are staying home and it's hard to, uh, sweep the streets when, uh, the cars are parked on the side. So we came to an agreement today to do Second Street and Third Street at least once a week. And then, um, other, of course, we can come out as needed, so if persons, people want to call or send an email, we can come out to their neighborhood. The trash hauling is, uh, um, has been reduced to just that which fits in the can. So if you need to have cardboard boxes and so forth left outside the can, you might find that left at the curb. But otherwise, the trash hauling continues uninterrupted. Today, we started talking about reducing our maintenance staff workload to just the essential services. So what does that mean? That means being able to have half the crew come in in the morning and half the crew in the afternoon. Um, and that means that we're checking our wells and our lift stations to make sure our systems are operating well. But we're not starting any new projects. We're not starting any new construction projects in the library or painting or anything like that. We're just keeping, uh, our hours to a minimum and, and keeping our staff at home because we know that if, if one member of our small staff gets, gets ill, it could, it could spread quickly and be a big problem for us. So that's our contingency and, and we've decided to do that, um, effective tomorrow, I believe. Um, we continue to compensate staff for regular work weeks. Um, we do have a loss of business policy that we're insured by, um, so we are tracking all the hours that people are compensated for, employees, when they might not be working. So if we had, uh, maintenance worker here for four hours, um, then he goes home, we would continue to pay them for eight hours, um, and then record that four hours as a loss of business. It's a half million dollar policy. We believe these are eligible costs, so that's the way we're going to track that for now. We're also paying, um, the, the part-time employees that, I understood the City Council's direction to mean, uh, let's keep our employees whole through this as best we can. Okay. We are working on our community wellness program and it continues to hold us together. It's interesting how, um, uh, a little communication in our community has really spread a long way and wonderful volunteers that have stepped up for that. I know the mayor's been involved, um, and, and Rich Brown, our code enforcement officer, has been leading the charge, which is great. Uh, we've expanded his hours and, uh, and, uh, they're all part of our response to this program, and it's unique and it fits our community. Um, I think it was Councilmember DeVries talked about one of his neighbors relying on a flip phone. Uh, maybe we want to pause for a minute and, and talk about this program. And then, and then we have a little slide presentation from Rochelle. So Mayor, if the council wants to add or suggest changes or comment on, on our little community wellness program, that, that would be a great time.
Any changes? I'm happy with the, with the outcome of it. We have, uh, Rich working on it, um, and community members that have worked on it and, and I'm, I'm pleased with it. It works, we have a phone tree, uh, that I've, uh, used, and, uh, I check in with my neighbor all the time. Every day we, we speak, and, uh, there's a few others that I, I check on. But, um, I don't have anything to add right now. I don't know if anybody else does.
No, I think it's working well. Um, I've talked to a couple people about it and they, most of them didn't know about it, but, uh, now, now they do, and I think it's gonna work well.
Yeah, I look around for the yellow, yellow signs on the windows. Somebody, some people are even bedazzling them.
Dressing them up is becoming a trend.
Yes, yes.
Sessar, any comments? Is he muted?
No, I, you know, I, I was, had a little involvement in that process, you know? But it's good, I think it's gonna work.
Yeah. Dan?
No, no comments, I think it's working well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, um, at, at this time, we are about to take it to a new level. Um, and, and I've got on my screen here something referred to as Mighty Networks. It's an app, it's kind of like Nextdoor, but it's not as big as Nextdoor. And I would like, uh, I've invited Rochelle to do a quick presentation on it today. Um, and let me see, Rochelle, if I can share the screen and get your slides up.
Um, I can actually share it from my screen.
Oh, can you? That'd be great, sure.
Oh, I can't while you're sharing yours.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I, uh, stop share. There you go, stop share. Okay, there you go.
There we go. All righty. Um, so Mighty Networks is, how come this is not going?
Is that Rochelle?
Yes, this is Rochelle from our.
Hi.
She's been our, our PIO and helping out with all of our, um, website updates. Um, we've got some great stuff on our website, thanks to Rochelle, and our Facebook presence, so helping to keep the community connected, working with Rich.
Yes, yeah. So, uh, we currently have quite a few different channels to communicate with people. Um, we don't necessarily have all the residents following every channel, though. Um, Facebook has about 345 followers, uh, Twitter, 95, Instagram, 675, and, um, the library, I didn't include, it's just I wanted to let you know, we still have an account there. And there's also the, um, associated with San Juan Batista. Those are run by the Community Business Association. A lot of times, they will repost things that I've posted on Facebook. Um, so the, um, problems with Facebook are the algorithms. Uh, you only see what you interact with, so, um, if you're not actively following, uh, any one of your friends or, um, municipals' contacts, you're not going to see what they're posting on a regular basis. Um, the other problem is that people are part of various groups. What's going on San Juan Batista, what's going on in San Juan Batista, just all these various places. So it's hard to know where to put the information to reach the most people. Um, Nextdoor, uh, there are eight neighborhoods for our small little municipality, and, um, you can't see, uh, everything that's posted except for ones that are within two and a half miles of your locality. Um, so I am part of the McKellamy group and I can't see what's going on in Olympia or, or, I can see Olympia, which is the farmland out towards, uh, Hollister, but I can't see, um, San Juan Batista itself, which is kind of the historic district area. That's a bit of a problem, so that's why I don't think that would be a place to put the information we need to get to, um, residents. Mighty Networks is nice because it works both on a mobile platform and on your computer. Um, you have the ability to follow different topics or, um, actually notify everyone that is part of your network. You can also private message, what we, which is what we wanted to use when we were communicating with the block captains. And as a host or moderator, you can delete inappropriate comments or, or posts. And that would be if somebody was advertising, uh, for their business or, or something along those lines. It's also not tied to any geographical location, so, uh, residents who have family members that are concerned about them and live in another state could join our network and, uh, keep track of what was going on. And, um, I said we'd like to use it for the block captains, uh, to notify community members if there's any changes to the state health order or if there's an earthquake and we want to get information out to them. Um, we're hoping that it's a long-term solution, what is, to what is currently, uh, just a short-term problem, um, but that will allow us to address future needs as they arise. So it's not just for the coronavirus or anything else that happens in 2019. It should be able to expand beyond that and, uh, remain at no cost to us. Spot. Um, the other thing I wanted to show was, um, uh, this is our current, um, San Juan Batista city page with the, um, for the website, with the COVID-19 information and the various press releases and, uh, separate pages for community wellness and residents.
Rochelle, we're still seeing the, uh, the.
Oh, you're still seeing.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, well, I don't know how to show you my, the websites then.
Oh, I, I have it up, if you want to surrender the screen, I.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I had it up here a minute ago, let's see.
And I, SanJuanBatista.ca.us.
Right, welcome to San Juan. So when you go to our website, okay, well, here's, here's the COVID site. Can you see it?
Uh, you have to share your screen again.
Okay, there we go. Where was this? Here we go. Okay, there we go.
There it is.
So do you want to go back to the start or?
Oh, no, that's good. Um, that's just where it is. It's, um, on the homepage, on the, the top of the screen, you'll see, uh, COVID-19 as one of the menu buttons. And then I've been filling it with information, um, that Don's been giving me or that I've found through Nixal or county sites. Um, I've gone to other cities to see what they're putting up. Um, I got a, a good portion of information from Santa Clara County, um, and Monterey. Uh, a few of them had cross-referenced one another and they forgot to change the, the names inside. But, um, anyway, uh, so that's all the things, uh, from the initial, um, idea for the website here on this page. And it, it got so lengthy that we broke it up into several pages.
All right, so we have all the links down the bottom, but then just this week, we built, um, this section up on the left, which, which lists, you know, if you're, uh, the latest press releases, the community wellness program for residents. releases, the community wellness program for residents, for business owners, public works, and then other resources. So this is all new and this is what Rochelle's been working on the last couple of weeks, amongst other things.
Well done.
Very good.
Well done.
Council members have any questions or thoughts? Rochelle, do you have anything else to add?
Just that the Mighty Networks would be similar information, but it would be presented in a Facebook format in a way, but you don't have all that spam and advertising and just silliness that happens on Facebook.
Okay, looks good.
Sessar likes it?
I like it, I like it.
Okay. John, anything?
Well, yeah, I like the page on the website. I would, is the Mighty Networks, is our web presence on the Mighty Networks, is it already up and running live now or?
It is up and live. You can go to MightyNetworks.com and search for San Juan Batista and it'll come up with San Juan Batista Network. I have not filled it with a lot of information because we were waiting for approval before fully filling it out. The thing that I like is that you can have different topics. So I have the stay-at-home order in English as a topic and then also one in Spanish as a topic. And that way, if you choose, you can, to follow one and not the other, it's actually still the same information, just in two different languages.
Nice.
Well, that's great.
Nice, yeah.
Yeah, we were going to start buying banners and trying to promote the program and I thought, you know, can we just wait till after Tuesday night and make sure the council and everybody's on the same page? And the sheriff's here today, so he'll know what it is and the members of the public that are watching, so just do a little bit of promotion, starting with this meeting and then hang the banner at the windmill parking lot later, so, okay.
He's got my approval.
Okay. And I don't know, is Rich on, is Rich on board? Is he here?
I am.
Rich, do you want to add anything? You've done a great job, man.
No, Rochelle did her excellent presentation and I thank the council for allowing us to go forward with this. I think it's going to be nice. It's more personable and it gives our citizens that better feeling of community involvement with familiar names and faces.
Great, okay. Thank you for all that you've done, Rich.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So Mayor, the next item is the budget, the fiscal impact update. And it's interesting, because I've had great conversations with Chuck as well as Wendy on this. I think a lot of cities were shaken in their boots when the governor started talking about delaying sales tax. And Chuck and I were just talking this afternoon, it's like, what sales tax? We're not collecting the other sales tax that we have been. So the governor's programs, I tried to print out some summaries, they're even hard to summarize because they're so complicated. Wendy has a pretty good understanding. Wendy, can I defer to you for just a summary of what we've been sharing in our conversations?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so in our conversations, we were focusing primarily today around the sales tax and trying to get our arms around what we can anticipate for our sales tax distributions going not only through the rest of this fiscal year, but into next fiscal year. And at this time, it's just all unknown. This came about this week about letting businesses defer their sales tax payments till the end of the year, but we haven't seen anything that, you know, was the safety net for the city. So it's unknown at this time what the impact will be. We are scheduled to receive our next monthly installment of sales tax towards the end of this month. We usually get it around the 20th of the month, automatically deposited to our account. And that would be for sales tax collected from, it'd be February, February through partial March. So it would be prior to the shutdown. So I'm expecting that to be a normal distribution. I don't know what, I mean, what the state's going to do as far as giving us advances. So generally, when they, we have a sales tax, they'll advance us an estimated amount for two months of the quarter and then they do a true-up at the end of the quarter. So we won't know until we see what we get deposited in the end of May, what that looks like. If the government, and I hope they do, they continue with the estimated and then true-up at the end of the calendar year, that would be good, but we still need to wait and see how that all plays out.
Thank you, Wendy. So to conclude, we thought we would be able to give you a more clear picture of what's going on, but it's still up in the air. When I talked with the city managers on Friday, the city manager of one city that relies as much as we do on sales tax was talking about surely the governor just meant his 6%. I'm like, no, he means the whole thing. So the city manager was sort of like, eyes wide open, oh my gosh, what's happening? So I know Sessar shared with me today that he was on the phone with other elected officials. Sessar, how did that conversation go?
The meeting was good. It was, you know, California elected officials, Latino elected officials, and there was a senator from Costa Mesa. And we thought he was going to talk about coronavirus, but he wound up talking about Chapter Nine, which is bankruptcy for the city and how they're handling it and how they managed to stay above water because they're losing a lot of money. For instance, Costa Mesa, it's, they're losing like $500,000 a day.
Wow.
And, you know, it's Orange County, you know, because Disneyland is shut down, they hired like 18,000 employees, you know? So that's, you know, that's something that I hadn't even thought about, but then there's three other cities that have gone through the same process, which is Vallejo, San Bernardino, I believe, and there's another one, Stockton.
Stockton and Vallejo.
Vallejo, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Sessar.
Thank you, Sessar.
It was very interesting, let me tell you. It's food for thought.
Yeah.
Well, fortunately, Ed Tewes and others left us in good shape. And as Wendy reported at the last council meeting last week, we have enough general fund reserve to see us through the end of the calendar year. So we'll ride this out and see where we go. On the other, on the other side, the League of California Cities is very busy lobbying the governor for clarification and sending letters and just letting him know that some of these decisions have widespread ramifications. So we need to provide police and fire in those communities where the businesses are. So it's all, it's all one big giant web and when you mess with one part of it, it impacts the rest, potentially.
Scary.
Scary stuff. Okay, Wendy, is there anything else you wanted to add or, and then we can, maybe the council has questions or concerns?
I just wanted to say that, because we are in the middle of preparing for the next fiscal year budget, we're going to keep a very close eye on this as well as the property taxes and other significant revenue sources and then plan to build a very, very conservative budget going into next year. But we'll, like I said, we'll continue to keep a good eye on everything with my resources and Dawn's resources and let you all know when we get more solid information on things going forward.
Awesome.
Wow, thanks, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, moving along, our next order of business.
Wait, Dawn?
Yes, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm sorry, we're going to the council, thank you.
Yeah, we've got a comment, yeah.
Yeah, I had some questions too. You go first, Dawn.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, we also have TOT taxes, which we collect. It's about $160,000 a year. And as I understand it, our two hotels are both closed down and probably be that way for at least a quarter, maybe even more. And so that's going to take a big hunk of that money out of our budget, you know? So I just kind of like to remind people of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dan, are you ready?
Yeah, thank you. Wendy, I had a couple of questions. You mentioned a normal distribution. What is a normal distribution typically or historically? How much has it been?
Between $50,000 and $60,000.
And that's distributed how often? What's the frequency?
Monthly, around the 20th of each month.
Okay. And what percentage of our operating budget is derived from sales tax? Is it a pretty high number?
Yeah, it's definitely, sales tax, property taxes, and TOT taxes make up a very large portion of the budget. Our operating budget, it's about, the sales tax is roughly 40%, of our operating budget.
Right.
That doesn't include utilities. So that's the general fund, not special revenues, general fund. But if we're looking at the enterprise funds, which I am definitely keeping a pulse on as well, the enterprise funds bring us about almost $2 million budgeted annually. And I was talking to our utility clerk today to ask her how her thing is going, are you seeing the cash come in? And she said at this time that there's no, there's no real change in the payment cycle, but the bills do go out for the month of March this week. So I'm going to speak with her again at the end of the week because a weekend bill for the utility revenue, that doesn't mean it's going to be cash in our bank. So I don't, I want to get a pulse on whether we need to budget out a 20% reduction in actual utility revenue or, you know, have some kind of allowance in there.
Right. So if we don't get our distributions of sales tax from Sacramento, we could be in real trouble.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big chunk of our annual budget. We do have reserve over right now and I think we're going to speak a little bit later on in this meeting regarding the use of those reserves and.
Yeah, and my questions are kind of designed to serve as a foundation for that discussion, which I know is coming up. How much, by the way, is in the fund reserve that you said could last us to the end of the year?
Oh, I think we have about $3 million overall. I have to do an analysis, which is part of the budget process to see, you know, what do we have and what can we use?
So, okay, well, certainly, we weren't going to spend $3 million before the end of the year, so when you said that we have, or I don't know if it was you or Dawn, but you said there's a fund reserve that could last us to the end of the year, what portion of that $3 million were you referring to? I didn't follow that.
You know, I'm actually not prepared to answer that question right now. I think that if you want that presentation in the next meeting, I can give you a breakdown so you can see very clearly what fund reserves we have.
Yeah, well, like you said, this will probably come up later when we talk on that other agenda item, so I can, I can wait till then. Thanks, Wendy, very much.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. So we'll go on to consider the status of public safety in the city.
So, okay, so we're okay with the COVID-19 conversation and moving on to public safety. Well, as you know, we had a surprise last Wednesday and I'll let Eric, Captain Taylor, talk to that. We don't have anything written for this item. It would just seem like a good, good time to touch bases on safety in our city. And I've got Rich standing by as well in case there's anything that he can add to the conversation. With that, I'll defer to Captain Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, and Paris, Mayor Jordan.
Hi.
So really, I guess what Dawn wanted to have was maybe a little bit of a dialogue as to the status of public safety in town and what we're doing and probably an update on the shooting that we had on Thursday. So I don't know if you want to start off with questions, if you have any direct questions you wanted to know or you want me to give a synopsis as to what happened and where we are with it first? I don't know.
Yeah, I think a summary of that would be great.
Sure. So Thursday evening, about 7:35, we received a report of shots fired at Fifth and Polk. The shorter version of the story is luckily, there were a couple State Parks Rangers here in town that were nearby, actually heard the shooting occur and responded immediately there. So within moments, we had two law enforcement officials on scene to help renderade the victim, get some good information out to responding units and really coordinate with the fire department, who was also there very quickly. So basically, the way this whole thing went down is there were a group of young men, young boys really, playing outside, all from the same family unit, pretty much, around the intersection of Fifth and Polk. And coincidentally, there was a group of five teenagers from the city of Hollister that for reasons unknown currently decided to drive through town to look for a target. We believe that when they got to the intersection of Fifth and Polk, they perceived there to be a possible gang member in the group, though everything we have to this point shows that there was no gang affiliation with the group. But there was probably some indicators to the, to the people in the car that would make them believe that the person was possibly gang affiliated. So they passed the group and I guess official law enforcement terms, they were mad-dogging the group as they drove by in a red Nissan Rogue. The Nissan proceeded down Fifth Street, did a U-turn, accelerated quickly back at the group, and as it passed the group, fired nine shots at the group, which scattered. Multiple bullets entered the home at the corner of Fifth and Polk and one of the rounds struck a female that was inside the house. The best we can say is that she sustained non-life-threatening injuries and was treated for those at a local trauma center. Fortunately, with the quick response of the State Parks Rangers, they were able to put out a very good description of the vehicle and an officer from Hollister Police Department. So to go back with our, we have a great partnership with not only State Parks, but our federal partners, Highway Patrol, and we have an ongoing great relationship with Hollister Police Department. And I also don't want to leave out the fact that we have a great relationship with JT and Floppy from First Level One Security, so I don't want to leave them out of the equation. But we just have a great relationships generally in this community. And so without us having to ask them to, Hollister Police Department took it upon themselves, their officers took it upon themselves to respond instinctively to areas that they thought may be suspect would be rendering their city. Oftentimes, when we have crime here, it's not generated from our residents, it's people coming from outside this area to victimize our businesses and the, in the community here. So knowing that and knowing the direction the vehicle went, the Hollister Police Officers set up at different points, pinch points that would go into their city. And luckily, one of their officers located the Nissan Rogue, turned it onto Union from 156 by Mitchell and they did what we call a high-risk car stop, safely detained all five passengers, recovered the firearm, recovered multiple shell casings, and we took all five into custody. Three males that were 17, a 17-year-old female, and a 19-year-old male. So at this point, we're treating it as at least gang-related or gang-motivated. If you have any questions as to anything else with the case, you can ask me, I can do the best answer because it's still an ongoing investigation.
I'm curious, were they incarcerated? What's, what are the charges? I mean, I know what the charges are, but what is the outcome of them being reprimanded and what consequences are they going to pay?
So we're working closely with our district attorney, Candace Hooper's office, and one of her deputy district attorneys to really sort through this case. So they, the four juveniles were booked in juvenile hall that night and the adult was booked in our county jail. And as far as I know, for now, they're still in custody. They're charged with attempted murder and conspiracy to commit murder. There's a lot of underlying charges that kind of go with that. But I think the more significant thing that this county doesn't have a lot of experience in, at least our office, luckily, where I came from, we had a lot of experience in this, but we're actually charging gang enhancements on this case. With a gang enhancement. in this, but we're actually charging gang enhancements on this case. What the gang enhancements do, there's two phases to the investigation. The first phase is basically who shot who? You know, that's one phase of the investigation. But the second part of the investigation is why it happened. And the why it happened can add ten, fifteen, twenty-five years on to a sentence. So those are the gang enhancements, and that's what's so important for us to be able to prove those allegations in court. So there's a lot of work to be done on the case, but all five were charged with the same charges. So when five people decide to get in a vehicle together and go looking for a target, they all get charged with the same thing. And had it been a homicide, they all would have been charged with murder. But in this case, all five are charged with attempted murder.
So what... How is the victim, the person that was shot, how is she recovering?
So that gets a little... And I think probably the COVID situation has brought HIPAA into a lot of people's homes. If you don't know what HIPAA is, it's the rules, what we can and can't say regarding someone's medical status. And if it's one thing that I've promised this council and everybody in this city and in our county, I'm probably one of the most transparent people you'll get, and I don't ever wanna hold anything back. But it does get difficult sometimes because there's certain things we can't say. So the proper thing to say is that they had... This person had non-life-threatening injuries. We can also say that this person was treated and released from the hospital. But as far as going into any other status, it gets a little dicey as to what their conditions are. Sometimes you'll hear police agencies say they're in critical condition, stable condition. They're really not supposed to say that. And I think that sometimes we forget that, because it's kind of, you know, terms that we all use, but we really need to be careful with what we say.
And how about the kids that were out playing? What were their ages?
They ranged probably from about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old. I would hope that this is a learning experience, because I responded personally from home to the scene of the shooting that night. I was also in communication with Don and later on with the mayor. And I will pledge to you to do that for you, so you know what's going on as things are happening the best I can. In the middle of that call, we had also locally a missing patient that suffers from dementia, and that happened at the exact same time. So split between a shooting investigation, I left our detectives on scene and started looking for our missing resident. And I think if there's a silver lining to the shooting that night, because of the community we have here, there was a lot of people out looking, just a lot of neighbors and friends and people in our community that were out actively looking for this woman that was missing. And she was located a short time later. It was really cold out. We got her to safety to a friend's house. But those were two things happening at the same time, both a very high priority. So... But I did take the time to meet with the family at the house and talk about decision-making that maybe the boys made that night, without making them feel like it's their fault. Had they been caring themselves in a different manner, maybe this wouldn't have happened to them at that time.
And is there any follow-up that you do with that family, that particular family? I mean, I understand that one of the boys was, you know, flagging a red flag, and so, you know, is there a follow-up to make sure that he's not wanting to be a wannabe still?
Well, one nice thing is that immediately the next day, I was contacted by the principal of our high school, showing concern for the boys that were involved. It's difficult with our educators that are not in the classroom and don't have their span of control over their little ducklings that they like to have. So I worked right away with our principal. And, you know, we also have a very good victim witness program in this county through the DA's office. We also have some very strong partners with Hollister Youth Alliance and their team. So we'll be using all of these resources to impact this family. I also have a very strong, very strong connection with First Five San Juanito, which inherently you would think it's only until five years old, but it's expanded way beyond that. So we actually are pretty resource-rich when it comes to this stuff here, and we'll plug that family into those resources. And I will tell you that it was refreshing, the response and the understanding from everybody that was involved that night and the neighbors. You know, we were able to knock on doors and talk to neighbors, and we had amazing support in this town, amazing support from people that gave statements, shared evidence with us, told us what they saw. It's things like that that are gonna make San Juan Batista not an attractive place for criminals to come, because I'll tell you that there's a lot of cameras on that street. It's not just that street. There's a lot of cameras everywhere because of the accessibility of cameras and they're relatively inexpensive. And I'll tell any crooks that are out there I know, the quality of the image is fantastic. And actually, Rich Brown helped a lot. Rich Brown canvassed the next day and was able to get me more images of the vehicle from the time of the crime. So, you know, we have good evidence. We have video of the crime. We have a lot of images, and it's probably not a place where crooks wanna come, because you're gonna be caught on camera.
That's good.
And we have a community that's cooperative, that wants to help, that cares about each other, that gives statements, that's cooperative, that let us into their homes. It was refreshing.
Yeah. And I think that's what's so special about, you know, the city of San Juan Batista. We're family, really. We're neighbors, but we are family. So does anybody else have any questions?
I do not.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well done. That was the fastest I've ever heard of anything happening. That was awesome.
Yeah, it was fantastic. And I know, I hope I'm not talking over the other council members. And I know it's... I leave the three of you out because I can't physically see you in this room, so I apologize to all three of you for that. But yes, so this just shows that when we keep our relationships built well in our law enforcement community, and not to take away from the fire department, the fire department was there. They helped take control of the scene. They helped control witnesses. They preserved evidence. The Hollister Fire Department was just as important as anybody else in this, and we can't thank the State Parks and Hollister Police enough. The reason, within moments of a shooting, which wasn't attempted murder, to have the vehicle, the gun, and five people in custody, it's a testament to how well we work together.
I wanna tell you...
Amazing.
I got a call from Level One, from Rich Brown and Captain Taylor, all within about thirty seconds. And I said, "Rich, talk to Councilmember DeVries." This was in his neighborhood, and that gave me a chance to reach out to you and John and Leslie and the mayor and keep everybody in touch. So that was really helpful. And that was just evident of how well we worked together that night.
I think so, too. And then also for Don to offer the next morning to help me craft a press release to make sure we got the right information out to the right people is a very kind gesture, and I thank you for that. I also had an offer from Hollister Police Department to help craft a joint press release from Lieutenant Olson, and I'm thankful for that partnership that we have. And so, you know, a lot of this stuff, even going to the yellow cards in the windows, what happened on Thursday night should shake the residents of this town, because it's a reality in California. It's a reality in Northern California, and it affects our neighbors a lot more than it affects us. And I've talked a lot in this community that it's a blessing and a curse that we're so small. So a lot of times, we don't have all the resources, and we're worried about sales tax tonight, and we're worried about, you know, maybe a pending recession. But at the same time, when you get right down to it, it's a tight-knit community, and it's not just City of San Juan Batista, the county as a whole. And, you know, we've had some... We've had some very few people in our county that have not been real cooperative with this whole shelter-in-place, but the vast, vast majority of people are looking out for each other. They're taking care of each other. They're doing the right thing. And it's just nice. I've told people in San Juan Batista many times, everybody picked the right place to live, because this stuff just doesn't happen here. And we'll do everything we can to prevent it from happening again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to open it up now, too. Dan DeVries, would you like to comment on this?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Captain. Thank you again for all you did Thursday night. It's chaotic around here. I just have one follow-up question. You mentioned that your... And the DA's is viewing this crime as being gang-related. Are you able to disclose what gang the shooters were affiliated with?
You know, if you want me to, I'll let you know. I tend to not do that, only because I don't like to give any credit.
Credit. Sure. Yeah, I can appreciate that in public, Captain. I'll just talk with you later about it.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk to you about that offline.
Absolutely.
But yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think you get it.
No, I completely understand.
Any other question? John Freeman?
No, I don't have any questions at this time, other than good job to all the people who responded.
Thank you, sir.
Cesar?
No comment, only thank God. We got people around here that are doing their job, and they live in our community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So thank you so much. And I think I let you know, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, because it just... You don't usually catch these people. And so it was fast thinking. It was teamwork and good work.
Thank you. Anything else for public safety stuff? I know that was kind of dominated.
So it looks like maybe we have public comment from Jackie Morris Lopez.
Okay.
And she can... Let's see. Jackie? Jackie, are you with us?
She's on there.
Does she have her hand raised?
Is there... Are you unmuted?
I'm unmuted now.
There you go. I can barely hear you, Jackie.
All right. Good evening, council members and staff and mayor. There's been so many topics. I'm not used to the format tonight, so excuse me. I'll get brief. I have a three-minute limit, correct?
Jackie, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, a bit better.
Okay. So anyway, I'm not used to the format, speaking after quite a few items have been discussed, but I just wanna touch maybe briefly on a few that just kind of stick out in my mind. One of them is the initial talk about the COVID-19 in terms of shelter-in-place. I did participate this morning with the county board of supervisors meeting, and there was discussion about essential business and which businesses should be open. One of them had to do directly with ongoing construction projects. And I heard mentioned here that there were two projects that have ongoing building going on. That is the Rancho Galarios over by the sewer plant, and then Copper Leaf. And I guess that interpretation is that these can progress as long as there's ten percent minimum of affordable housing. I, as a professional healthcare worker, I'm a healthcare provider, I'm a primary care PA, I find that to be quite reckless to continue with any sort of non-essential or non-urgent building, simply because you're putting our community at risk, you're putting these workers at risk, they're in close proximity. And I really am bothered by the fact that we're allowing the developers to construe their own safety measures and have those presented to our committees for approval. I feel that's pretty lax. I feel that we all are aware, well aware of all the up-date information about the COVID-19 virus. We're finding that there's very many genome strains. It's not just one particular type that we're all getting infected with. It has a lot to do with travel, traveling from other areas with different strains. So I feel like we really need to kind of look at that before we just blanket saying, "Yeah, it's okay." And the other thing I wanna mention about the shelter-in-place and essential business, most of our businesses in downtown, we all know, have sheltered or shut down. There are some that are still open, and I'm wondering if they're considered essential, if someone can really look at it. One of them that kind of, I'm sort of... This is not to be picking on anybody. I know people have to make a living, but I don't see ice cream as being an essential food group. There's a business in Hollister that's doing the same thing. And once again, if we're gonna take this serious and contain the virus, we need to really take the shelter-in-place and essential businesses seriously. And lastly, to the shooting that took place last week, once again, I was not aware that the State Park Rangers were able to do that. Kudos to them, the fast community response. That was awesome. I think it's really important and pertinent that you also offer, like you said, support to the young group of boys or teens that were out on the street, also do a little bit more investigation as to the intent of why these people just sort of showed up on Hope Street. I, as a community member, would like to say that we need to have gang suppression. So gang suppression is ask a lot of questions. What were these kids doing on the street at that time? They're supposed to be sheltering in place. Do they have any soft gang affiliation? Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, she finished.
Thank you, Jackie.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak?
If no one else wants to speak, then we'll go on to...
Thank you.
I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, you know what? It says, "Report from the sheriff," but we already have a report.
That's it.
Yeah.
Nothing else.
So, okay, that's it. Thank you.
I'm in trouble.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Stay safe, stay well.
So then we go on to inter-agency collaboration.
So that was just a reminder for myself to make sure that we mentioned what a great team effort that was. So in that regard, we've done that, so.
Okay. All right, good. So now we go on to additional considerations.
So under additional considerations, is there more work that the city needs to do as far as studying safety in our community? Is there something you wanna consider in terms of the budget that we can look up now? I just was curious to know if any of the council members, with our heightened awareness, but I think that the captain actually rests assured, helped me to understand the situation better. So I'm not as alarmed as I am, but maybe the council has some direction that they want the staff to look up on.
You made an addition on additional security or something like that, along those lines?
Additional security. I had mentioned a few of the council members upon coming on board in July, a possibility of doing like a safety audit, having a retired police chief come in and just do a little study of safety in our community. But, you know, when we did our survey and our strategic planning in February, this wasn't the biggest objective. I'm sorry, I come from a city where this is always the first topic in Salinas. And so here, traffic and parking enforcement, other things were important, but not necessarily outright safety. So if folks want us to look at that, I'm happy to take that on, given the time and the resources.
Does anybody have any comment on that?
Yes, I can offer a comment, Madam Mayor. Don, I think it's, as you and I talked about this on the telephone, I think it's a good idea. While our city might not be what anyone would deem highly dangerous, there nevertheless are perhaps some areas of concern and maybe some things we don't know about. I'd be interested in getting perhaps a budget number for doing something like that to see what the physical impact would be. I think the more information, the better.
Okay, that's simple enough. I can reach out for some proposals.
Any other comments, John?
No, I just... I agree with Dan there. And I did kinda wanna add that, you know, one crime, even though it was very serious, it does not make for a crime spree or crime wave. So we need to react, but possibly not overreact.
Thank you. Cesar Flores?
No comment. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
I'm good, thank you.
The only thing I would agree with Dan, I think we need to maybe have some sort of a study. Don and I have... a study. Don and I have had a conversation in the past, in fact, right after he got here. That was, that's always been one of my priorities, is to look into a police department or at least do a study and work toward that, kind of, you know, make that a goal of ours so that we can eventually have a police department. I think it's important that we have a presence. And not that the sheriff's department isn't doing a good job or Level 1, but I still feel that we need to look into something. That's all I have to say.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? You're okay?
All right. So, then now we'll go on to item four, action items. Consider adopting Resolution 2020 XX, establishing an emergency fund using general fund reserves that provides immediate assistance to small local restaurants and businesses for the purchase of personal protective equipment for staff and community and contributes to the county's Emergency Response Fund.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. As I understood, direction from last Tuesday was to work with any council members who are interested in helping to establish a criteria for who, what local businesses may qualify or be considered eligible for a loan or grant program from our general fund. We had looked at a program from the city of Hayward, where they're offering $5,000 and really little or no criteria at all. But it was like an emergency fund to help businesses get through that April 1st rent and other obligations that they have. The new programs, remember, a week ago Tuesday, were just coming online from the federal government, and they continue to roll out. One of them, we looked at two programs, the emergency grant, SBA grant program, that had attached to it a loan program that had attached to it a $10,000 grant, and then a whole separate category related to payroll and covering payroll costs. And that program just rolled out late last week. So, one thing that I've been doing is, as I've been looking at this, I did prepare that, and it's on the screen, and I've shared this with the council. I just whipped it out on Monday. Basically, it's an application process of what a business would do to qualify for such a thing. And the whole idea is that we try and shore up our economic base, which of course is the hospitality industry and our historic preservation efforts in our storefront restaurants in our historic district. And then the federal government helps us out with some of the criteria, rents, debt obligation, payroll, sick leave, and different categories. And so, that's basically, that was some feedback from council members De Vries and Freeman, put together just kind of an application that we could use. But in light of our conversation of our budget and our uncertainty, it just seems this might be overstepping our limitations right now, and that there is a lot of uncertainty. And I've shared that with a number of people. And I wanted Wendy, Wendy Cummings, our CPA, has been studying webinar after webinar on this, because she has clients that are small business owners, and she also wants to help our city weave through this federal maze of trying to help businesses help themselves. So, Wendy, what is your feeling? Is that a good introduction?
Yes, that's a good introduction. Yeah, I've been taking a number of classes over the last 10 days regarding the SBA and the funds that are available to help small businesses, meaning people that employ less than 500 employees, and what their options and opportunities are to stay afloat with the CARES Act. And as we talked last, our last meeting, there is essentially two programs, and there are other areas as well, but essentially two programs. One is the Emergency Relief Funds, which is an easy application on the SBA website, where they would, after you fill out the application, if approved, they automatically deposit $10,000 into your bank account and then offer you a loan with reasonable terms. And then the other portion is the Paycheck Protection Program, which allows employers to calculate their average monthly gross payroll for the 2019. So, looking back to all the calendar year 2019, and coming up with your average gross payroll, and add to that your benefits, medical insurance, as well as a retirement plan, and then you come up with a monthly amount, and then you multiply that by 2.5. And then that is the basis of the loan. And you have to go through a SBA lender bank. So, what I'm finding with my clients is that the, getting in queue with the banks has been a challenge, because the banks were also kind of broad-sided with this last week, and people clamoring to get money. So, I'm advising my clients, number one, getting in queue with a number of the banks. And then also, you know, consider applying for this emergency relief funds. I'm not going to go through all the provisions, it's very, very complicated, but I'm just kind of giving you like a taste of what is out there. But what I'm also, so hearing, it was supposed to be that within three days of applying for the $10,000 fund, it should go into your bank account. I haven't heard of a single entity that has seen a single dollar. And the websites crashed a number of times, and I think it's just a matter of, I don't know why they put the three-day marker out there and was setting expectations, but the system wasn't in place to handle all the applications. So, there's where we're at right now. Open to questions.
So, and we also talked, and Chuck and I shared the same sentiment as you and I today about just the uncertainty. Nobody in their right mind would make a loan right now. And Chuck is waving his hands across the room. And so, the message I'm getting is to put the brakes on and at least keep this in abeyance for a while until we see how things, how the dust settles. As we heard Sessa report, in some cities, this is a breaking point for them. And so, we want to be sure that's not us.
Absolutely.
So, I don't know what the council thinks.
Well, no, I just, I agree. I think we need to just hold off and just, we can't, we have an unknown, and we have no idea what our position is going to be in a few weeks or months. And I think it's, I think it would be reckless of us to do something like that. We need to think of the whole community, and we have an obligation to the city. And I don't think we should do this right now, not at this time.
Okay. Chuck, do you want to invite Chuck to pitch in, or the rest of the council?
Yes, of course. Well, Leslie, do you have any comments?
I have a question. I'm hesitant about the loans, but part of this was a contribution to the county's Emergency Response Fund. Where are we with that?
Um...
Has the county asked for anything?
Not formally, no. And when I asked or suggested that they budget those monies so we'd know what we were contributing to...
Yes.
No was the answer. I mean, so, they're spending that money as they see fit. And I hesitate to throw our contribution into this black hole.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
If I could just make one more comment too, that I don't think I made a point of. On the PPP program, that's the Paycheck Protection Program, at that two and a half times your monthly gross wages and benefits, the idea is that once you receive the loan, within eight weeks, if you've spent it towards qualifying expenses such as bringing your employees back, bringing your headcount back, and you demonstrate that those funds are forgiven.
So, it becomes a grant?
Yeah, exactly.
Right. That's nice.
Dan, or Sessa?
Dan, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, first I can start with the fact that I just, I have been doing all of these applications and so forth for the past, well, March 20th was when I first submitted an application. I think acronyms like EIDL and the Emergency Economic Injury Grant and PPP and all that stuff. I've had a pretty good experience with it. I did use an advisor from Cal Coastal in San Luis, and I recommended that any small businesses out there that might be tuning into this, do the same. Cal Coastal is fantastic, it's for free, and they got you through the whole process, which was really helpful. In terms of city granting out money that we might ourselves need to get by, I was telling Don the other day on the phone, that old saying that says something like, if you are, if your plane is going down, put your oxygen mask on yourself first before you can help anyone else.
Right.
We got to make sure that we are going to weather this storm before we can help anyone else, and we have to be mindful of that. I hope our hearts are well-intended, but, you know, things are going to get, like the governor keeping our sales tax for 12 months as rumored to be true. That's something real that we need to take into account.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Sessa Flores, do you have anything to say?
He's muted.
Okay.
Sessa?
I was muted. Yeah, no, I agree. I think we need to hold off, because we, you know, the future's not that sure. So, let's not spend our money that we may need in the near future, you know? But it's a good plan, and if it's really needed, then I think we could reconsider it. But right now, I'd suggest we just hold off on it.
Okay, okay. And then did you want to...
That's it.
Oh, John, John, I'm sorry.
I basically agree with the other councilman. It might be too early right now, but I do want to remind us, if we don't have any businesses, when we come back, we won't have a city or a community. It'll be very hard. So, you know, the reasons for us to help out is we need to help protect workers who are laid off due to the shelter-in-place regulations. We need to help small businesses that are shuttered with a shelter and business place. And we also need to help local governments, which is us, who are losing revenue and facing the possibility of higher expenditures because of the shelter-in-place situation. So, those three items are kind of like my basis for it. And I would just agree with Dan completely. Go to the, I've heard the state is going to start up some new programs also, the federal, like Wendy has said, I've heard the same thing, the website crashes on you all the time, and it's a very frustrating experience. But I would keep trying if I was a business out there, whether it be San Juan or anybody, Hollister, a small business. I'd keep trying to apply. And apparently, the state's going to come up with their own version in the next couple of weeks. So, maybe after we, the businesses exhaust the federal government and the state, we can see where we fit in. So, I would at least wait for all that to kind of shake out and see where we're at.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, Chuck, would you like to come up and say a few words?
So, Chuck's going to say a few words. Thank you.
I don't know if I should be wearing this, or...
Well, we won't be able to hear you.
Okay, I just, by the way, you can make these things. My wife sewed this one for me, so it's nice.
Yeah.
And anyway...
Do you want to do an introduction?
Anyway, people, I'm Chuck Iger, City Treasurer. Been in the town 26 years, been on the City Council. So, I know where you're coming from, and I can't stress patience. That's, you've just got to be careful, patient, and watch this thing unroll from the state level. And I agree with John, what he was saying, that there will be more plans will come out. Right now, you got everybody just kind of reaching, and we're not sure what we need to be doing. San Juan has come from a position of almost going belly up 10 years ago. And so, we need to be really careful with our money. And, but I do also feel for the people in our community. And I just, just wish, you know, I hope this goes away. You know, we've been in it now, what, about a month, maybe three weeks? And it seems like we just have to give it time. And I think this curve is coming down, and I think we're going to get through this. But we just have to be patient and just take it one day at a time. And be careful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public, is the public...
Does public have any comments?
Can you see if anybody has their hands up?
Does anyone have their hand up?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay. So, members of the public, hearing?
None, I guess.
Okay, well, then, now we, we will need a motion to table this?
Yeah, and then we'll bring it back if necessary. At least we have it in the box.
Yeah. I make a motion to table Resolution 2020 XX, establishing an emergency fund until...
So moved.
Second. Thanks, Sessa.
Thank you.
We don't know when until this, but, you know...
Yeah.
Do you want to vote?
So...
Second.
Let's do roll call, vote. We're going to do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes. I made the motion.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I need approval of the posting of the affidavit agenda.
I make a motion to approve the affidavit of posting agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sessa. All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Last time I couldn't hear. Okay. So, now we go on to reports from the City Council. Does anybody have reports?
I just wanted to say that several people have contacted me about volunteering for different jobs during this situation, jobs like education or delivering groceries in the windmill, if they start up their program. So, we might need a little coordination, something to think about, and once getting, going past just the nice yellow signs in the windows and things, and phone trees, just day-to-day work that people need done, that some people can't do, and other things. So, and I've had three people volunteer to me personally. So, just wanted to put that out there.
So, there is a phone number that you can give them, and it would be Rich's phone number. And then those volunteers, give the information to Rich, and then that will trickle down to the people that are helping Rich.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, John.
And then we'll look for other opportunities. I've gotten them myself.
Anyone else? Dan?
Sorry, I was on mute. No, nothing to report.
Okay. Sessa?
No, I'm fine.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Nothing. My meetings are canceled.
Oh, okay. I wonder why.
The mayor has to...
And did you have anything to say?
No, I appreciate the council staying in close communication. Sometimes you're involved in meetings that I'm not aware that you're involved in, and so, I appreciate updates from you, and I'll reciprocate, of course. So, thank you very much. Thanks for all of your dedication and service. These are hard times.
Yeah, thank you for everything.
So, lastly, I don't have anything really to report on, but I would just like to thank our... our community for being so patient, following protocol, staying in shelter-in-place, and it's an invisible, an invisible warrior out there that's coming after us, and so we need to fight it back, and so we need to follow the protocols that the health department has put in place. And I want to commend everybody for staying and following up. This coming Sunday is Easter, and so I'm encouraging everybody to have your Easter egg hunts in your backyard or indoors if weather does not permit to be outside, but please, please, please stay at home and have a good time, make it fun. And the other thing I just wanted to say, on behalf of the city council and staff here in San Juan Batista, I want to wish everybody a safe and healthy Easter. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Oh, I need somebody to...
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Okay, great.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye. Bye, JT.
Is he waving over there?
Yeah, he was waving.
Okay, and don't say anything because last time we were still on for a long time.
I muted it. I just muted it. Because, see, it's recording the meeting now.
Yeah.
And that's what takes a while. But it's a nice backup hook. Did the sounds seem good tonight?
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
Oh, did you see Wyatt, Baby Wyatt? Apparently JT held him up.
I'm sorry?
You guys can cut your mics.
Oh, yeah? I did not. Thank you.
Oh, so are we going to meet next Tuesday or can we talk about that? I forgot.
I make a motion to have another one next Tuesday.
You want to?
Well, either we're going to go up or we're going to go down, and either way, I think we should let everybody know how we're faring as a community.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
And then the following week, we can play.
The following week is regular.
It's a regular meeting.
Yeah, maybe.
What do you mean, maybe?
Yeah, who knows? Who knows? Well, you know, it went on again.
Maybe it was gone from 21 to 31.
31, yeah. We have more that are, we have 31 pending, we have 31 backed in, and whatever the rest of the...
Is it 12 or 13 that have recovered?
Yeah, I think. Good ones. But depending on how the rest of the country goes, whether we're going to continue this or not.
Well, get some more clarification. It's a good way to disseminate information, and what he's helping is by staying on top of the grant, so.
That was awesome.
Yeah. You know, I just, I have to say, we really have a good team. Don, you know, is our, you know, fearless leader, and Wendy and Deborah.
Is Deborah on? I can't see with or without glasses anymore.
Well, I think, and I'm not going to mess with the recorded meeting, it'll be an inventory of my attendance.
Oh, good.
And it may not say, it'll say Danny Jor. I'll say Danny.
I saw that.
Danny Joe. Mine comes up as L-J-O-R-D.
Mine comes out of Sarah, yeah. My wife says it.
I, you know, I didn't know what I'd come up with, but when you have the meeting, I went and I opened my account and I did a contacts, contact group, and I called it family. And the only people that got the invitation was my, two of my nieces, and I think my brother is Southern California. And nobody else got the notification. Try sending individually? So you sent it individually?
Like you added everybody's name individually instead of the group?
And then it said that the invitation was on the clipboard. The job notes on the clipboard.
There's really good tutorials.
I did, I went on. And I looked at it, I mean, I made my notes and I followed every name, postmark, and I, and it's like, oh, so frustrating.